Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Tanya Bowers? Present. Joseph Campos? Paul Mendez?
Present.
Abel Campos?
Present.
Isaac Myron? You have to unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, I'm registered but he's offline at the moment.
Okay. Rachel Teal?
Present.
Jay Handler?
Present.
Jerry Cochran?
Present.
Madam Chair, we have eight members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for the record. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the December 17th, 2020 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, Jay Campos, I move to approve the meeting minutes as read.
Second?
Commissioner Handler, I second.
Terrific. It has been moved by Commissioner Jay Campos and seconded by Commissioner Handler. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. Okay, we will start with old business. We actually do not have any unfinished business today, so we will be proceeding to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing. And this is in regards to a code amendment, which is House Bill 1923, duplex, triplex, and courtyard apartments. This is master file CA 2020-001. I believe someone needs to mute their phone. And we will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is an update on the ongoing efforts to implement the House Bill 1923 amendments. We will be focusing on action, action number one, which is highlighted on the screen today. And it's a proposal to authorize at least one duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartment on each parcel in one or more residential zoning districts. The Planning Commission recommended approval of action item number two, which was the lot size averaging at the December 20th, December 2020 Planning Commission meeting. And staff expects to bring action number three, which is the authorization of accessory dwelling units back at the February and March meetings for discussion. So just a little bit of update on the 1923 amendments. So again, action number one is for the authorization of duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartments in residential zoning districts in the City of Pasco. And typically, the term thrown around with these kinds of units is missing middle. So you'll see that a little bit throughout the staff report and in the presentation as well. And so the primary municipal code updates will be in Title 21 and the subdivision regulations and in Title 25 for zoning. You'll also notice the bullet point that unless the city documents a specific infrastructure or physical constraint, that we can, if we can document and, if we can document that infrastructure or physical constraint, that would be a factor in when, I'm sorry, where we would permit the units here. So on the next slide, we have, again, the zoning districts for the City of Pasco. And you can see the variety of them and also where we would permit, where we currently allow and where we do not allow these particular housing types. You can see that the majority of our zoning districts do not allow for a duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartment, whereas the R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts do. And on the next slide, you'll see the map. Again, we've shown this map at prior Planning Commission meetings. Again, that indicates that over 80% of our land does not residentially zoned, zoning districts do not allow multifamily units. It's allowed on only 16% of the residential zoning district, so obviously a little bit of disparity there. Also want to mention, back on, if we can go back to the prior map, because I just wanted to point this out too. We've gone back and looked at the rezones that have taken place since 2018, because I think that would be an important component of this item here. And there's been 30 rezones, residential rezones in the City of Pasco since 2018. And every single one of them has been for an upzone. So I think obviously that probably was what we expected, but I think it's also important to note that the majority of these rezones are having, are occurring in the areas where multifamily is not allowed. On the next slide, we just have a few examples of what these housing types look like. A variety of duplexes, where they share the lot line, I'm sorry, where they share a wall, a triplex. You can see that in the courtyard apartment, which would be four units, either connected by wall or separated by a courtyard or an open space on one lot. And the difference between this and what we have currently in the code is that these are permitted on one lot. And what the city's seen actually quite a bit of success with recently are the zero lot line developments, which are the two, three, and even sometimes four units where they share a lot line and a wall. They essentially, they'll look like a duplex, a triplex from the street, but on the accessory side, they're on separate parcels, separate residential lots. So I apologize if this table is a little too small, but this is the, in order to identify where we can make the most significant impact and also where the gap exists in the city with regards to density, the staff took a look at where we currently, our land use classifications, which you see on the left, and the permitted range of densities that we currently allow. So there's three of these. There's the low, mid, and high, which indicate that on the low end of low-density residential, we would get two units an acre, but we also allow up to five units an acre in low-density residential. And for example, on medium-density residential, that range is from six units an acre, although we have up to 20 units an acre. You'll see the varies text under the high-density residential. And that's because we don't typically, we don't really have a maximum density. However, it's limited due to height. However, through a special permit process, height can be, you could apply for a special permit for a taller building. You're also limited by lot sizes and maximum lot coverages and setbacks. So it can get, there's no definitive answer on the high-density land use. But the purpose of this table is to showcase that we do have a range of permitted densities in the City of Pasco. And the reason why we're focusing on land use is because we see a lot more rezones than we do land use amendments. Land use amendments by the Growth Management Act by law only allow us to amend the comprehensive plan once per year, whereas rezones can happen throughout the year at any time, once per month. And obviously, we've seen quite a bit of those over the past few years. So on this slide, the very left column in that light blue, you'll see our current number of dwellings in that particular land use classification. And you'll also see to the right of that light blue, the range of permitted densities in that land use category. So for instance, in the low-density land use on the far left, we have approximately 17,580 or so dwellings currently. And we're well above the low range of what we permit. In fact, we have built 152% of our low densities lowest range. However, we are below the mid-range and far below the highest range of five units an acre. And that trend continues for the medium, high, and mixed residential and commercial uses. Now, in order for us to identify this particular graphic, we took a look at the future land use map, which you remember from the Comprehensive Plan in Urban Growth Area discussions. So this is based on the total land in the preferred urban growth area, which was recommended by the Planning Commission and adopted by council in October. And just as a very quick update, that urban growth area is being discussed with the Franklin County Planning Commission last month and throughout the rest of this winter. But we wanted to take a look at the future land use so we could identify where the gap is. So obviously, with significant amounts of vacant land in the future urban growth area, the gap was predictable. We knew that was going to occur, but it helps us determine where we might have the most significant impact as we move forward with this amendment. So if we go to the next slide, just a table version, and you can see in red where we are well below what we already allow as of today based on the current number of dwellings in that particular land use. So again, when we look at the mixed residential and commercial land use, which does permit residential dwellings, obviously, right? We've built roughly 30% of the low range, 9% of the mid, and 5% of the high. So outside of that top left of the low-density residential, on the low, on the low range, we are far below the rest of our thresholds. Again, to be expected. So in order for us to calculate where we may be able to make an impact here, we took a similar approach that we conducted with the land capacity analysis that was utilized for the Comprehensive Plan in Urban Growth Area. So we looked at three scenarios, which is we keep the density the same and apply those densities to the entire urban growth area on the existing vacant residential lots and also those lots with no current uses or structures on them. We didn't look at redevelopment for the purposes of this discussion or for this analysis. So we kept the density the same for scenario number one. Scenario, scenario number two is the comprehensive plan densities. And if you remember, in order for us to accommodate the roughly 15,000 or so dwellings that we need by the year 2038, we had to expand the urban growth area, or request to expand the urban growth area. And when we performed the land capacity analysis and we took the mid, sort of a average between the mid and the high so that we can try to create more infill opportunities and also have a response to the increasing demand for slightly higher residential development, which is occurring throughout the tri-cities as of today. So that scenario two represents what's in the comprehensive plan. And scenario number three represents making a change to the low-density land use. We actually, and just to go back on scenario number two, we didn't change the density for low-density. We kept it stagnant. It was a very conservative approach. On scenario number three, we modified it to what it would permit as of today. And so with that in mind, the results indicate that under the current densities, we do not meet our housing demand by the year 2038. And in fact, we're over 5,000 units short. So if we keep the densities the same, we will not meet the demand we are expected to have by the year 2038. If we use the comprehensive plan designations or densities, we do meet that demand. In fact, we achieve roughly 108%. And on scenario number, on scenario number three, where we make that increase to just the low-density land use, we slightly increase our options with up to 111% of what we're expected to meet. Now, also keep in mind that while we do during the land capacity analysis, we deduct land to account for right-of-way such as public streets, environmental factors, market factors, which is guidance from the Washington State Department of Commerce. Also keep in mind that a significant portion of our lands will also be necessary for the development of schools. High schools take up to 80 acres, middle schools 40 acres, fire stations, parks, et cetera. So the land that we use to calculate here, in reality, is likely going to meet much less. Back to the interest for more housing options. This is the Pasco Housing Choices Survey that we had conducted back in the fall, where we reached out to housing professionals, stakeholders, realtors, et cetera. And 95% of them had indicated that more housing options are necessary in Pasco. In fact, 77% agree or strongly agree that Pasco should allow more duplexes. And 63% agree that Pasco should allow more triplexes. And when we look at input from the community members, which is on the next slide, this is, these are the results of the 2020 National Citizen Survey, which the city conducts every two years. Again, strong interest and support for affordable housing incentives, changes to the zoning for housing supply, and also a really interesting question, which was just let the market decide. And I think what's really interesting about these particular topics, as cities are addressing this throughout the country, is that it's an opportunity for cities to sort of allow for the market to do what the market is capable of doing if we open up our zoning to allow for housing to be built. So it's a weird and sort of odd, but I think beneficial, mutually beneficial conversation and opportunity for both public agencies and those in private housing development, where cities are re-allowing housing that used to be built quite frequently and reintroducing or re-allowing them throughout the land uses and letting the market decide if it's profitable for them to build a duplex or an apartment or a single-family detached unit. This is a slide that we're trying to make better practice of in the planning department. That is relating our code amendments back to the comprehensive plan goals and policies. So the Growth Management Act requires us to have a housing element that encourages housing variety for all members of the community. And so on this screen, we have a variety of land use and housing goals that line up with the, or addressed by this particular amendment, such as policy foresee increasing housing supply and diversity through appropriate and flexible development standards and so on. There's quite a bit of support for housing reform or missing middle, is what this called. The National Association of Home Builders, Association of Realtors, and AARP all have produced significant documentation and research on their support for these items across the country. Obviously, there's a benefit to them, but there's also a benefit to community members looking for housing. And also on the bottom, you can see the cities in the state of Washington that have adopted zoning changes similar to what we're proposing, a lot of them through the House Bill 1923 process. So both big, mid, small, and rural cities from Vancouver, Washington, in the Portland area to Anachi, growing tourism area. Walla Walla recently went through a very significant overhaul of their zoning requirements. Snohomish County as a whole, Kirkland. So quite an extensive list here in the state of Washington. And I also want to point out that, again, nationally, this is becoming more and more of a topic. In fact, Oregon was one of the first states at the state level to mandate zoning changes such as this. The state of Massachusetts recently adopted housing reform for the entire state of Massachusetts. And the state of Montana is currently discussing this throughout the legislative process. In addition to the states of Minnesota, Maryland, Nebraska, Vermont, Virginia, all those states have considered missing middle reform. So I think we're right on target here with what we eventually, we'll come back to Planning Commission with a proposal. So again, some considerations for the Planning Commission and for those in the public. Obviously, you can see the chart there where we allow and do not allow multifamily units. I think some conditions that we have discussed, preliminary, a staff is permitting near existing or planned sewer facilities. So when we go back to one of the qualifiers of the item itself, which was due to a physical constraint or an infrastructure concern or constraint, we do have some sewer capacity constraints in portions of the city where it is likely we would have to limit the applicability of this particular amendment. For instance, in the Riverview area, just due to lack of sewer capacity. We are coordinating with Public Works as the sewer comprehensive plan addendum is in progress. So we are doing this with them as well. Some cities have utilized permitting triplexes or courtyard apartments only on corner lots, which I think is an interesting technique. We can even do something similar as what we did with the lot size averaging, which was allow more increased density and flexibilities within a certain distance of a public facility or land use, such as a hospital, a park, a school, a public transit facility, et cetera, just to take advantage of the accessibility there. There's also the incorporation of design standards. Some cities have altered their maximum lot coverages. They've altered their setback requirements. Now, that is a much more comprehensive approach, which may be in line with what Pasco has in the future, but I'm not sure if, again, depending on what the Planning Commission would like staff to identify and analyze, that could be a consideration for us. So we, so I think over the past few months on this particular item, we've tried to present and provide enough information to the Planning Commission. And our intent is to come back in February after listening to comments tonight with a draft proposal for the Planning Commission to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments?
Hey, this is Commissioner Cochran. I had a question about, it's maybe more like recommendation for staff when they come back in February. You know, you have this table that says like, you know, the zoning districts and whether duplex, triplexes, and courtyards are allowed. It would be interesting to see that table, like, what is it? How does that table change for scenario? I assume you're going to come back and recommend scenario two or three because they meet the build guidelines for our predictions in 2038. But it'd be interesting to see, what are you, what is the change to that table in scenario two or three, depending on which one staff recommends, or if there's another scenario? Because that kind of helped me understand then, you know, all right, so for this zoning district, are we going to allow these things or not? And I guess right now, it's not clear to me the two scenarios that you kind of mapped out, how that table would change. So I hope that makes sense.
Certainly. So within each zoning district, right now, particularly with those RS20, RS12, and R1, and RS1, right now, the only permitted dwelling type is for a single-family detached. And so in the proposal, staff would come back with, to the Planning Commission, you would see, for instance, in the RS1, you would still be allowed, obviously, to do a single-family detached, but perhaps you could also have a triplex and courtyard apartment on a corner lot. And sort of a scaling, you know, and kind of have that scale towards the, as you go up in lot size. So for instance, in RS20, which probably consists of more than 75% of our rezones to a higher density, but for instance, in the RS20 zoning district, we would take a look at maybe permitting, allowing duplexes within a feasible distance of a planned or existing sewer facility. And it would be added, so all of these units would be added as permitted dwelling types in the applicable zoning district. I'm not sure if that answered the question, but I could certainly try again.
No, that was it. I think that would help a lot to be able to see how this table would build out based on your proposal.
And I would, I would add to that, that it would be helpful to see on the map which of the areas that haven't been built up as yet, what those might look like if this recommendation were to go in place. Anyone else? I would also think that it's important just to note that it's not saying that it's required for us to have this multifamily dwellings. It's just that it would be an option in some of, whether it's infill or some of the areas that haven't been built up as yet.
Yes, that's correct. That's a very good point, too. Similar to the ordinance that was approved back in 2020 on plan unit developments. It was a very, slightly, it was a slightly aggressive amendment to the plan unit development ordinance to make it more user-friendly. And if it is used, then great. If it's not, that's fine, too. But it's another option for local builders and property owners to utilize as they choose to subdivide their property as they see fit.
Thank you for adding that. I would now, unless we have any other commissioners who would like to speak, I would now open the public hearing. Any individual who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. We're going to ask you to state your name and city of address for the record. Oh, all right. I'm going to call three times for public comment. Going, going. All right, I would entertain a motion. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I don't think we have any of this one.
Okay, so we have nothing. No recommendation.
I don't think it's recommendation, right? Or, um, a movement.
I'm sorry, you're right. There is no recommendation, even though it was a public hearing. So with that, we will now close that public hearing. Explanation from staff.
Yes, uh, my apologies for that. That should have been included in the staff report. The, uh, staff, uh, intends to come back to the planning commission, um, in February with additional information regarding the map. And a use table and any additional information that we can provide in a likely, uh, draft proposal for your review in February.
Thank you very much. We are moving on in our agenda. Uh, we don't have anything in workshop. We do have other business and, uh, on that front. We have a comprehensive plan amendment, comprehensive update regarding master file number C P A twenty twenty zero zero one.
Uh, greeting, greetings again, members of the planning commission. Uh, this is just an update, uh, a periodic update. The Washington State Department of Commerce looks at three items to certify, uh, that jurisdictions are up to date with their comprehensive plan. That is the comprehensive plan itself. It's also, uh, compliance with the critical areas ordinance and, uh, various development regulations. So we will be taking a look at the critical area ordinance and development regulations for this comprehensive planned amendment today. And, uh, on this slide, uh, you can see the, uh, various items that we will be taking a look at. Uh, this is mainly a text amendment to be compliant with recent state legislation and R C W. So a lot of these are just going to be updates to our definitions or creation of these terms in the Pasco municipal code. So for instance, uh, Pasco does not technically have an affordable housing definition in its municipal code. So we will add that. Uh, the provisions for manufactured housing, that should be removed. We actually checked with our building official and Pasco does comply with that. So that won't be an update we need to make. But you'll notice on there that there is an update, uh, for electrical vehicle battery charging station. So that's something that wasn't around when our comprehensive plan in two thousand and eight was adopted. So we will be adding that to the municipal code and, and two items that are going to be a little bit more extensive are the comprehensive plan amendment process and emergency amendment process. Uh, currently, uh, we don't have an emergency amendment process. State law, uh, allows us one time per year to update or amend the comp plan. However, uh, we can through an emergency amendment, uh, conduct another amendment or change the comp plan. So we are going to work on establishing that process and also the same with the, uh, annual amendment or docketing as well. So right now staff is taking a look at the checklist that the growth management services from commerce provides for us to make sure that our definitions and terms are compliant with the Growth Management Act. Uh, we are, uh, preparing our environmental checklist, the CIPA, uh, which we believe will be issued, um, if not by the end of January, then very early February. And, uh, we look to come back to the planning commission with a, uh, with the ordinance, a draft ordinance for your recommendation of approval. Prior to it being, um, submitted over to the Department of Commerce and obviously the city council for final adoption. So it's really is just more of an administrative update, but it, there's some significant language in here that needs to be added. So, uh, uh, obviously commerce, uh, requires us to do this. So it's, but it's more administrative in terms of the terms and definitions that need to be added to the Pasco municipal code.
Terrific. Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? There being no questions around this. I am now going to go towards adjournment of this meeting. Our next meeting will be held on February eighteenth twenty twenty-one. And with that, I will now adjourn this meeting. Thanks very much, everyone.